Okay, folks, it's a couple of minutes after seven. I'd like to call and order this April 6th meeting of the Fairiesburg Planning Commission. Craig, could you give us a roll?
Chairman Riffle.
Present.
Commissioner Carlson.
Here.
Commissioner Jonas, Commissioner Schoberg, Commissioner Weber, Commissioner Targel, Commissioner Hawley.
All in favor, please say yes.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, abstentions, okay, we're good. Okay, consideration for approval, the April 6th, 2023 agenda. Craig has prepared an agenda for our meeting. And are there any additions or corrections, changes to this agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a point of order question. Maybe Craig would know this. We have two rezoning requests before we have the actual definitions to be included in our renovations of this, or, you know, changes to the ordinances. So should we maybe first say, yeah, approve the definitions before we go to rezoning questions, or doesn't it matter?
Well, if it's not going to be rezoned, then it's going to be a midpoint use because it will remain residential, which wouldn't be allowed.
But we don't need the definitions for future reference at all, necessarily?
It kind of goes hand in hand.
Okay, all right, I just thought I'd ask.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we approve the agenda as prepared. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, okay, we've accepted the agenda. Consideration for approval, the March 2nd, 2023 minutes, a meeting printed as prepared. And before someone quickly says, let's move the accept it, I just want to point out, Craig, you always do such an excellent job with these minutes. Just one little typo here. Down in minute number eight, the last complete line there, it says parcel from RG2 medium density residential to GD, I think that should be GC, general commercial. It's a one minor little typo that I saw. So, any additions or corrections additionally to that minor change? Any, someone want to move it with the minor change?
I'll move we accept with John's change.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, we accept the minutes as prepared of the March 2nd meeting with one slight change. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, okay, we've accepted it. Okay, we're down to agenda item number five. It's customary in Fairiesburg Planning Commission meetings to give the public an opportunity to share anything that they would like to with us. And if you would like to share something with us, I'd invite you to come to the podium and give us your name and your address. But let me just also note that we are scheduled to have two public hearings. And if your comments relate to one of those public hearings, I would request that you hold off making your comments till we get to that public hearing. So if you'd like to make comments about anything other than the two public hearings that are here, I would invite you to come to the podium and share thoughts. Okay, not seeing anyone come to the podium. I'd like to close the public comments at 7:06. And let's move forward to item number six, a public hearing. Public hearing, consider request filed by, to consider a request filed, Michigan Land and Water Corporation for the city to amend City Code, Chapter 154, zoning, Article 9, districts and district standards, to rezone from RG2 medium density residential to GC general commercial, a part of parcel number 700309300-039, commonly known as vacant land. Area to be rezoned is four acres more or less, and I think it is more. And let me just begin by saying that this is coming for us because Mr. Camps, I think, has a desire to purchase the land and has a plan for the land, or some storage type units, and that's sort of the background here. And so if anyone would like to share some thoughts with us, we'd love to hear them. Again, state your name and your address, please.
James Bremer, live at 17714 174th Avenue, but I also am part owner of 17826 174th Avenue, which is a neighboring property. Quite a few years back, this same wonderful company, I'd put a factory right in there. At that time, the planning commission said, no, we will use the creek, goes from Blacklake all the way to Smiths Bio, as a natural boundary, but we'll leave it residential. Now you're going to turn it into a commercial? Do, do what? Put in storage units on that side? They've already cut down the trees there, they cut down trees on my property without permission. They dumped dirt in there, which Mr. Bestinger said they were going to use as storage, store the dirt in there, and then they went in there with a bulldozer, shoved it all around. I was told by Jess Russ, I don't know what his name is, because when he introduced himself, he said his name was Jess Russ, back in the day, when he approached me, he told me that wasn't wetland. Well, all the maps I saw back then, it was wetland. Now, I see on the other side of that same creek, which drains into Smiths Bio and everything, their planks went in there and dumped all their leaf, black dirt, in that whole area. They've been hauling it in there for the last two weeks, or the last week and a half. Is anybody even watching the stuff that goes down over there in the city? Has that dirt ever been tested? You throwing it on that water that runs right out into Smiths Bio?
So I did talk to the property owner about that, and he indicated that he had a fill permit in 2016 for a number of cubic yards, and he was finishing up the amount of fill I was bringing in on that fill permit.
Okay, then it's my understanding, what you're saying right here now, that if I get a permit for something, it carries on forever?
Well, it was already put down when I got word of what was happening, so that was the explanation I got.
I can't even talk to you even when they start putting dirt in there for the land you're talking about now. You told me they were going to store it in there. That dirt got spread all over, now when I walk in my back field, it looks over. Hill there, other side of that hill was, this side it's all water, I walked through yesterday.
South side? On the south side of the creek?
The, the south side of the creek, yeah.
Okay.
So, if you want to know how I feel about this, I feel that whole company that has anything to do with this ought to be checked out. And no, I don't want to change. I don't want to change the commercial, that little piece of property going in there and have something right by the house, because my daughter and her family live there, to have some kind of commercial property going on right next door.
Follow up question. Help me to understand precisely where your property is relative to this. I've got a map here somewhere.
Where my property is?
Yeah, can you come up here and show me?
Sure.
Here's a, this is the parcel they're talking about, here's another map. Any one of these houses here, or?
Yeah, this is my house right here.
Okay.
This parcel right here.
Yeah, that's the parcel, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a creek that runs down through there.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
That's where they filled all this in, back in here, with the dirt, which I was told was just for storage, then they shoved that all around, and all kinds of junk.
And where did they put it on your property?
They put it on my property.
Oh, I thought you said they put something on your property.
No, the water all drains to my property now, because any water that comes in here all comes off this way, off this hill that used to be there, it used to go up to the creek.
You said they cut that off.
Where are those trees?
Those trees are out on here.
The southern end of this parcel.
Yeah.
Am I circling correctly on?
That's okay.
That's, my daughter, my daughter lives in the fire, on the hill.
Okay, so you're probably, okay.
And so the topography here is, what's causing this now, the water to go this way?
They filled this back, they filled this back in here with all black dirt.
This whole area here?
Dirt, I don't know if it's black dirt or not.
I have.
It was all soaked down.
I have not walked the parcel. So what, what was this like back in there, prior to when the dirt came in?
Well, there was all trees until back in there, and then they cut them all down. I came home from work that night, I seen some trees around, and then I said to the guy, don't cut trees on here, as long as you mind. So what happened, is that's true?
Southern Park, right?
It's a, it's a part of that piece of property.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure they're talking about all this. This is where they put all the black dirt in there from the leaves, right on the edge of that creek.
Onto this property?
Onto that property.
Not onto this property.
This property, I don't know what that dirt did. I don't think anybody's testing that dirt.
Do we have a procedure for testing of fill dirt that comes in, Craig?
No, I, it's a, fill permit is required to have, and their dirt brought in, can't be contaminated, so it's up to the property owner to make sure it's clean dirt coming in.
Well, then how long does it get away with? It's like, like you're not, it's not even, it's still be, still be used, I remember that.
I'm Tara DeBernie, and I live at 17826 174th. We already deal with the trash that goes into our yard, all of this. I do not want fucking garbage, garbage, thing else onto my property that I need to do. I mean, it's, it's a mess out there. Why, why do I have to do it?
You're further south, you're, you're next to?
Right next. Right, so right on the north side where you're finding these.
You're the closest to where this property is. And you're getting things from Lepings?
I love it, so both crossed and on the street, right onward and into our yard, that whole front field, you know? Woods, our two houses, full of garbage, all the time. Nobody picks it up. Lepings doesn't care that it blows over. Now you want to put a storage facility there, I don't want to empty my storage facility, I don't want to take care of my stuff, I'll just, I'll just.
Anyone else like to share anything with us? I think, I'm not sure what the story is with Lepings, but they're supposed, they should have containers there for their own trash, that's where it needs to go. Maybe they need to be reminded about that, Craig. But I think maybe this is appropriate time to read this letter that came here that wasn't in her packet. This is from Ed and Mary DeKeep, and Dave and Sandy Peterson, and John and Jan Peterson. Not here tonight, right? None of you are here? Yeah. Okay, well, let me read what they shared with us here about this. Concerns the MI Land and Water Corporation rezoning request. Responsibility for purchasing property that is already zoned for the intended use by the land developer lies solely with them. Whenever a zoning change request like this comes before the planning commission, we wonder why city brothers, why our city bothers to hire professional city planning advisors, invests months of time and spend thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money on zoning standards and master plans? Was all that effort simply wasted? It seems that all the work and expense that went into establishing the zoning standards and master plans means absolutely nothing to the land developers. The planning commission is responsible for protecting the citizens of Fairiesburg against land uses which do not conform to zoning standards and master plan. The planning commission is under no obligation to approve zoning change requests, the result from the failure of the land developer to purchase property that's properly zoned for the intended use. The planning commission must defend the existing zoning standards and master plans against these piecemeal zoning change requests. This will demonstrate that they respect these standards and plans, and are fulfilling their responsibilities to the citizens. The storage units proposed by the land developer are not essential, since many of these businesses already exist in the area. Examples of these businesses are located on 174th Avenue, Taft Road, and Sternberg Road. It seems like the owners of these businesses had no difficulty in finding land already zoned for this use. A storage unit business belongs in a commercial area, and would be totally incompatible in a residential area. This type of business attracts thieves, and therefore requires security fencing, locking gates, limited hours of access, and all night security lighting. While these things are normal for a storage unit business, they are detrimental to the existing residential land use of the adjacent properties. We strongly urge you to protect the existing residential land use of the adjacent properties by declining the request to change this parcel from residential to commercial respectfully. Ed and Mary DeKeep, Dave and Sandy Peterson, and John and Jan Peterson. Know what people, what the neighbors think about something till you have a public hearing, and people find out what's going on, and they come in and share them with us. And so I'm glad you came in, and I'm glad these folks sent, sent a message. That's, that's how it should work. I don't know how it's officially, is it, do you know if it's officially classified as wetland?
I do not.
A little bit of background on this, because you haven't been at recent meetings, I don't think. This developer who, who wants to develop this parcel, has developed other parcels in the city in, in the LI, LI Light Industrial One Zone, and has had a good record with us, has done what he said he would do, and the projects look very nice, and it's been parcels where there really wasn't any concern by neighbors. So it was, it was a good addition to Fairiesburg. Over the years, Fairiesburg has been concerned about economic development to some extent, and no one has moved to, to develop this residentially, this particular parcel. You are correct, I've served on this body for a long period of time, and I guess a long time gives you a perspective to see things. And I was on the, on the planning commission when a developer came and wanted to put a big box store in that area. You had mentioned some other type of use, but it was a big. Okay, I don't remember that one, but. Okay, well, I'm not sure what the date of the, the big box store was, but we, we thank the developer for coming in and requesting the changes would be necessary to allow that, that we didn't think that was appropriate for Fairiesburg to have a big box store up there, and I saw. Well, it was a dollar store, I think that's what it was, yeah. So, the history is, we've been hoping to get some development, economic development in Fairiesburg, and increase the tax base and so forth. No one has stepped forward to present a plan to use this land for residential development, which is what it's zoned for right now. And so when this developer came and said, you know, I've, I've worked with you before, we've, we've had very successful projects, and I think you've been happy with what we've done, and we said, yes, we have. And so he's worked with the landowner, I guess, to get some kind of lease to, to get, to get the land, I don't think he owns it yet, not aware that he does, but he was hoping he'd be able to do that. And in light of the fact that no one has stepped forward to provide some effort for residential in that area, and given that this is adjoining a commercial, area that's zoned, a commercial, we thought that that wouldn't be the end, end of the world to, to do that. So we were looking at it, I think probably favorably, but we haven't heard what the neighbor said. So you're here and you're telling us, so thank you. Yeah. Helper has a facility that has lighting, it has to be shielded lighting that's downward, and if it, if it, if it's lighted, it strays off the property, they need to shield that, like with pine trees or something like that. There would probably be some, yes. Yeah. Okay, well, you've given us food, food for thought here. So, what are my fellow, well, anything else here in the public hearing? I think we're hearing that you're not, not in favor of it. We've got that, and certainly the, your neighbors here who wrote this very literate presentation here is helpful. Well, they, they were not planning on building any kind of road that would go to the north there. I think they were going to leave that alone, that's what we were told. Yes. Yes, yeah. This isn't a big plan, I think, that they have, so. Anything with us here? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point at 7:28. And now we're on to item number nine, which is to discuss and take action if appropriate to recommend a city council to amend, not amend, the City Code, Chapter 154, zoning, Article 9, districts and district standards, to rezone from RG2 medium density residential to GC general commercial, a part of parcel number 700309300-039, commonly known as vacant land. Area to be rezoned is four acres more or less.
Mr. Chairman, do we know who was cutting trees and filling this? Is it the current owner, or the, if he doesn't even own the property, is he already working on it?
No, he's not, it's my understanding it's the current owner.
Okay, well, I think the first thing really bothers me that you cut down your trees without permission. Yeah.
Oh, that's something just now.
Also, the lighting still is of concern to me, because you can see, you may have to have sheltered lights, or, you know, it's still going to be a bother, but I think the first thing we have to do is check the wetland status. That just seems like the very least we can do before we make any kind of decision. Check the west line, wetland status.
Does, does the burden of that fall on this body? No.
Unless.
I believe so.
Property owner would have to provide that information to us? The property owner?
Here's back. Okay. North side. Property on the north, north of the, uh, creek. Um, I don't know who the owner of that, it's the same, same person who owns this property, right? So they, um, they must know what's being dumped on there. They've, they've given permission to dump and also to cut trees there. They're cutting trees there too. Is it all clear cut this point?
I agree.
What do we really have to find out here? I'd like to walk the property. I want to see what's going on. I didn't do that. I've driven past it, but not today. Probably should walk in there and see what's going on in a nice sunny day, like it's coming up. Part of the creek, um, they have the right to cut trees if they want to. It's their property. If they're putting fill on there, they need to make sure that what's being put in there is, uh, is safe.
I can request from the property owner, the amount of fill that was brought in and where it was from. Yep. I'm not sure, uh, I didn't know there was fifty trucks going in there. I didn't, I didn't know that.
If it's pushed down, is the stuff north of the creek or south of the creek?
North.
North. But it, they haven't moved anything in there recently that you're aware of. I think Craig has said he probably needs to find out what's going on there. So, do we table this?
Move to table?
Now, before we take a vote on this, there's no discussion on tabling. So it's an up or down motion. So if we, uh, vote to table, then it's table till someone brings it up at a future meeting. Everyone understands that? Okay. So you move to table it? Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved and second table, uh, this, uh, this activity. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention. It's unanimous that we're going to table this. Down to item number eight, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend city code. Amend in chapter one five four zoning to amend section two twenty, to include the definitions of personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facility. To mend section four eighty to include special land use specific standards for personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities. To bend section nine point one one zero to allow accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites and, uh, self-storage facilities as a special land use in the GC commercial, general commercial zoning district. And to bend section nine one twenty to allow self-storage facilities and personal and commercial storage suites as special land uses in the Light Industrial LI One zoning district. Um, you know, folks, as I, as I went through this this afternoon and studied carefully, um, well, what, what, we, we had, remember last week, last meeting, um, David was not here, our consultant. And Craig, uh, shared with him what we were hoping he would do in terms of, uh, developing this language. And I found some of the things that he has here to be quite confusing. And when I talked earlier today to Craig, I asked, is David coming tonight? And first he was, but then he wasn't. And, uh, uh, I would actually like to have him here to engage, uh, with him, uh, about what he's proposing. But I think actually, until, if, until there's a positive movement on the previous item we just tabled, uh, this is really not necessary to do at this point. Are we all sort of on that page? So, should we table this too then? Okay. Entertained a motion to table this? It's removed and seconded to table item number eight here. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. It's unanimous and we tabled it. Thank you. Okay. We're down to agenda item. Ten, discussion. Sidewalk, front area cafe seating. And, um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We should have a motion to table number nine also, please. Just for the record.
Sure. Okay. When did someone share?
Oh, move to table item nine.
Is there a second? Support. It's removed and seconded. We also table item number nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. It's unanimous. Tabled it. Okay. We're down to agenda item number ten. Which is sidewalk, front area cafe seating. And, um, Jamie Knudsen, uh, from Pine Street Cafe has submitted something here. And, um, I think we're just going to really talk about it here. But, um, if you, are you here? Yeah. Would you mind coming up and, uh, just telling us what you're hoping you would be able to do somewhere down the road?
So my plans for Pine Street Cafe, I know it looks like a tight area space there, but there's enough area. Once, you know, I talked to the architect, wasn't able to come unfortunately today. Um, once I measured the area with him, which I've sent over those blueprints over to Craig. Hopefully I have those on file there. Um, the amount of area that we have within the sidewalk without adapting into that sidewalk area, the width of that is about a hundred and twenty-eight inches, just over ten and a half feet and forty-two feet in length there. So about ten and a half feet wide, five forty-two foot in length. That would be fenced in around within a, uh, support of cement underneath that. Um, about a three foot in height barrier. Um, again, that'd be reinforced underneath cement. Um, the walk through outside of that would be the, uh, entrance door from Pine Street Cafe, or Pine Street that's facing Pine Street to the marina there. Um, there would be two, uh, fire exits on each side of that patio. Um, the hours of operation right now are seven AM to two PM on the cafe. My goals would be to extend that to seven PM, um, come to the summertime. Try to do some night traffic for the marinas and some of the local people that we have there. Probably just Thursday to Sunday to start, but I wanted to bring up that for you guys for hours of operation. Um, any type of lights that we'd have on there, make sure it's appropriate shining on there. Um, just make sure that we have lights appropriate if we do extend into those PM hours. Obviously it's, you know, light out here, um, in the summertime, but if that does exceed into the fall or this early spring hours there. Um, I don't look to have any type of fixed awning or, um, barrier in the beginning, but would like to possibly see that in the future years. So just wanted to project that out there to you guys. But in this future plan year for 2023, it would be a plan of fenced around there with umbrellas on seven, uh, square foot, uh, four-person tables there. So we'd have seven, maybe eight tables there, um, is what I'm, uh, proposing. Uh, speakers, there would be outside speakers I'm hoping to have out there. Nothing real loud, just to adapt to the same interior music that I have. Would have the same outside music there. Uh, would not be loud, wouldn't be blowing anything away there. Um, I would project that, you know, from Craig and myself away here, fifty feet away, you would not hear that music away there. So across the street or to the next block there at Fifth Third, you would not hear that music by all means. Um, like I said, umbrellas to start, could be an overhang patio down the road. And obviously with no liquor license, there would be no alcohol at this time. So that's what we're projecting. I think it'd be great for the marina, um, for the travel, uh, transit traffic that we have in the summertime. The community as well. Obviously this is the only restaurant here in Ferrisburg. Um, it's a huge driven community restaurant. It's one of the biggest reasons I came here. I love those community driven restaurants. I look at like what Bear Lake Tavern has over in North Muskegon. Uh, fifteen years ago, I ran that restaurant as well. Um, if you look at what, you know, Point Marine has in that marina, they flock to that. North Muskegon flocks to that restaurant in the summertime. And, you know, it'd be huge for the community itself as well as the marina. So no trees would be removed, no grass would be removed. What I'm looking to do in there is all loose stone. So, uh, that stone would have to be removed if we need to do any kind of greenscape or, um, artificial play, uh, greenware or anything like that planting. I can definitely adapt into that. Um, obviously there is some traffic up front there, um, adjacent to the sidewalk. Low traffic area. I have a fencing in there. Um, and that's pretty much the, uh, the projection plan of what I had booked for there. So. Thank you.
Our adjacent communities have, have addressed that they have outdoors patio seating for restaurants. And, uh, I think it's going to become a, another issue. Probably when the brewery that's in the marine, in the marina building there, when he sees this happening, he'll say, I want something outside too, uh, I suspect. Uh, and I like, I like the idea. So I think, um, I'm in favor of being open, favorably disposed toward it. Um, and, um, uh, I guess, um, and what are your thoughts, folks?
I also do. Um, right now we have no provision for outdoor dining. So we first have to lay the groundwork, right? By addressing all of these in some kind of ordinance.
That's correct.
So it probably won't be as fast as what you'd like or what we'd all like. But, um, um, I really think it's a great idea. So otherwise it would have just gone to the ZBA if we had ordinances, but we don't. So we have to build it from, if you build it, they will come, I guess. Ordinance change, we'd have to go through a public hearing here and then.
City council.
And then to city council. So we are talking, unless we did special meetings, we would be talking a couple of months minimum.
What, what's your timeline?
Action would essentially be putting some concrete down and putting a fence around the area, right? Yeah. So that it's pretty simple.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Would the increase in, in, um, tables put more burden on the increase of parking?
Full force, uh, full house, uh, there were still empty places back there, so. So I think maybe, um, we should ask David to, uh, come up with some language here to, um, for us to look at.
Sure. We can do that.
And, uh, don't know what, uh, what the situation will be since your property, your building is so close to the sidewalk there. Um, you'll have to see, you know, if that, there would have to be an exception or your facility there. I don't know.
Comes up with?
The only thing I would suggest is, um, serving alcoholic beverages probably would be coming down the pipe, depending on how successful you are or lack of success and you need to bring it in. Uh, whatever improvements you make out there, make sure that they're going to meet like your control commission requirements for height and access and all that.
Yep. Make sure I do that to talk, this is my future plan.
Okay. Yep. Yeah.
Public comments. And again, we invite the public, uh, uh, anyone here who might have anything to share with us, um, to come forward and give us your name and your address. Obviously we did, we did too, so. Okay. Well, not seeing anyone coming to the microphone, I'm going to close the public comment section at seven, um, forty-nine. And let's move on to zoning administrators' report.
No report.
Okay. Chairman's report. Uh, I do have a thought for you here. In our packet was, uh, information.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. Uh, in our packet was, uh, information about, uh, the Grand Haven, uh, two thousand twenty-three master plan update. And I'm sure everyone has carefully read through it, uh, line by line. Uh, and, um, you know, the adjoining communities are, whenever, whenever a community goes through, uh, a master plan update, they're required to solicit feedback from the public and from adjoining communities. So we get these every so often when Spring Lake does it or when we do it, uh, or when Grand Haven does it. And, uh, usually I think we, we look at it a bit and, uh, usually don't send anything back. Anyone have feedback that they would like to give them?
On the, on the last page, it talks about the NS North Shore District. And we reviewed this with the Kitchell Inquest Do and Preserve Board, and they have. and they have concerns with some of the language in there. Talk about it's ideal for a low-density residential. So, they're going to make a response to Grand Haven regarding that concern. Yes, sir. Yes.
All right, members' reports, comments. No report.
Standing up.
Does it include restaurants and retailers like The Reef and Lepings in one bunch or only serving?
I'm not, I don't know what that was.
That was just a question I had. I hope to have a Bloody Mary one day at your place, so...
Right now, there is not a, I don't know what they call it, is a Class C license available in the city of Ferriesburg, correct?
That's my understanding. Last, there was two of them. And one was at the Trilling Room, one was at Pizza Hut. And Pizza Hut got sold, I believe.
That would just surprise me that there's such a few amount of serving licenses in a town of 3,500 people.
Turned here at 7:53. Thank you.